The Revelation is, comes from the Greek word apokalupso. And that word means unveiling. So it's not some scary word like, you know, some people try to make it out to be. Um, the book of Revelation is about the consummation of all things. And it's the only book, as we've already seen in our study, that promises us a special blessing just for reading it and understanding it. Why does it do that? Well, lots of reasons maybe why. But I think probably the primary one, it has 404 verses in it. And there's 800 allusions to the Old Testament in those 404 verses. So if we, it forces us to go back and understand the Old Testament to really understand and unlock the book. Now, as we also talked about in our earlier sessions, we talked about that, he gives us an outline for the entire book at the end of chapter one. Chapter one, verse 19, "Write the things which thou hast seen." That's the vision of Christ. That's chapter one. So John sees that vision of Christ as the high priest. And then write the things which are. Well, what are the things that are in John's time? Well, it's the seven churches, which we've been going through and we're going to cover more tonight, um, which is covered in chapter two and three. And then the whole tone of the book and the tenor of the book changes when we hit chapter four. And chapter four through 22 would be what Jesus was saying in Revelation 1:19 and the things which shall be hereafter. So those are, that's the outline for the book. The seven churches. You know, there are seven, there were seven literal churches as we have talked about and considered. Now, some people say, well, why did he pick these seven? Cause they, you know, there were several hundred New Testament churches in that time period. So why did he pick those seven? He could have picked, you know, lots of other churches. He didn't pick the church in Colossians. He didn't pick some of these other churches. So why did he pick these seven? I think it's because the seven together. Cause he says, "He that hath near, let him hear what the Spirit says to the church is." Every single letter is for all of them. And it's for, I believe, the church as a whole. So I believe these seven represent, they're pieces of them in all churches. And I believe that's what it represents. So we're going to see again, as we go through this, for each church, there's a local tenor to it. There is, this was a, there was a literal local church in these locations. There's also an admonition that we're going to see as we go through each church. And we've already seen in the others. We're going to talk about a homiletic. Something we can apply to our personal lives. And then we'll look at the, the more, um, I would call it, um, the prophetic interpretation of it. That one's a little more controversial. Most people probably agree on the first three, but the fourth one tends to cause a lot of controversy. And again, I'll let you make your own mind up on what you think about that fourth level as we go through this and as we go through the book. Because if you would have had these letters in any other order, they kind of tell a different story. They don't really lay out church history from the first century to the 21st century. Um, so we'll consider those things as we go. So the church, Thyatira. The church was in Thyatira and a little history on Thyatira. It was originally a Lydian town. Um, and you can see that, um, it had the bearing of the name of Pelopaea. And then you can see Cimaramus. Um, and then Euphida, or Euhippa, Hippia, something like that. I can't really pronounce it, but Cimaramus is an interesting thing that we'll kind of see, but it started with Pelopaea. Um, and it was taken by the Persians. And then Alexander later took it from the Persians. So I don't remember if it was Xerxes or Cyrus, but one of those Persian kings took Thyatira. But then when the Persians fell, as Daniel prophesied they would, and Alexander rose, Alexander took over these cities. Um, and this city was given to Lysicumus, which was one of his four generals. And we'll kind of, again, that's, that comes from references in Daniel and we'll look at more in Daniel later on, because Daniel, it's, it's not really the focus to get into Daniel and tying all that in, but as we go further in the book of Revelation, we will bring Daniel into focus more and more. So in, in 301 B.C., Lysicumus was defeated by Seleucus the first. Um, and then it became part of Syria. And then it got named Thyatira at this point. So it is based on, you know, his being informed, his daughter had been, had had a daughter born to him. So he named the city after his daughter. Well, Thyatira, yeah, I told you, I mentioned the whole thing about Cimaramus. And Cimaramus, you gotta go way, way back. You gotta go all the way back to Babylon to understand what these names mean and what they're, what we're referring to. So there is, and we've talked about this a little bit in other studies, but we're going to hit it a little bit more this time as well. Tammuz was born to Nimrod and Cimaramus. So Tammuz was their son. Well, Tammuz gets associated with the sun god. However, that stuff came up and happened, we don't really know. There's all the mythology around it, but these things, you know, we know Nimrod was real and these things are literal. But somehow Tammuz got associated with the sun god. And he would die at the winter solstice and it would be resurrected as the days got longer. That was part of their mythology. And as I've mentioned to you previously, they celebrated the feast of Saturnalia. Um, well, later called the Saturnalia, the Romans called it Saturnalia, but it's this same feast by burning a yule log. And the thing is, this yule log was not this friendly thing like we think about. They would hollow out a log and put a baby in there and, and burn it in a fire. So very much abortion. Um, also mistletoe and wassail, all these things come all the way back from Babylon. There's a book by a gentleman by the name of Alexander Hislop that I have listed there. And Alex, I have the book. It's called The Two Babylons. And it ties in the Roman Catholic Church with the Babylonians. It's, it's a very interesting kind of thing. It's how it, so many things that the Catholic Church picked up came from Babylon, as we'll see. So Hislop in his book also shows the Babylonian roots. So you see, we start with Babylon. We have Cimaramus and Tammuz for Babylon. Those names get changed for the, as you go through these different cultures. So the Phoenicians, you probably are familiar with Asherah. Cause Asherah comes up with the Jews a lot in the Old Testament, because they get in trouble by God for worshiping that thing. You know, that, uh, that goddess. And then Camas is equivalent in Phoenicia of Tammuz. Then if you look at the Egyptian culture, you probably have heard of these gods or goddesses, Isis and Horus. Again, these are the same entities, whether they were real or not. I don't, we may get into more of that later. Talking about Nephilim, but they definitely, um, are the same beings or representatives in all of these cultures, all through history. So they continued um, to take these things and just change the names of them. As you see, after Egypt, Greece. Greece has Aphrodite and Eros that represents Cimaramus and Tammuz. Um, and then when you go to Rome, Rome renames them to Venus and Cupid. And a lot of those statues you see in, that the Catholic Church displays, that they say is Mary, is actually, um, goes back to Cimaramus. So they all go back, way, way back. So when Cyrus conquered Babylon, the Babylonian priests and their initiates fled. They got the heck out of Babylon. Because the Persian empire would not tolerate their Babylonian gods. So they fled and ended up in Pergamos. And when we talked about Pergamos, I had mentioned that. So they were in Pergamos. And this, this became the centroid of power that ultimately shifted all the way to Rome. Now, there's a little clue to this. Um, and this is one of those places where we jump to another book um, of the Bible. If you look at Zechariah, chapter five. Let me find it. Should have had it open already. But if we look at Zechariah, chapter five, I won't, obviously, I won't read the whole chapter to you, but I would do want to point out a couple of things in there. So the, the title of the chapter is the flying scroll. It says, "And I lifted up my eyes and looked, and behold, there was a flying scroll." And he said to me, "What do you see?" He's talking to the Lord. Um, and he said, "I answered, and I see a flying scroll. Its length is 20 cubits and its width is 10 cubits." Then he said to me, "This is the curse that's going forth over the face of the whole world." Surely everyone who steals will be purged away according to the writings on one side. And everyone, and if you're, and as we get into further into Revelation, when we see Revelation six, that scroll is written on both sides. Now, this isn't the same scroll, but it's just showing that that was a common thing that they would do. They would write on both sides of a scroll. So he said, "This is a curse that goes out." Um, and he says, "And everyone who swears will be purged away according to the writings on the other side. And I will make it go forth, declares the Lord a host, and it will enter the house of the thief and the house of the one who swears falsely by my name and spends the night within the house and consumes its timbers and stones." And if you continue reading this, he also talks about these storks. And if you're familiar with Jewish culture, storks were an unclean bird. So the fact that these storks are present and these storks, it says that the storks lift, there's a woman in an ephah. And this is in, still in Zechariah five. And this woman in the ephah is lifted up from Babylon and taken somewhere else. Um, so the, these are allusions to the kind of thing that happened. The centroid of power shifts first from Babylon to, um, to Pergamos, and then it eventually shifts to Rome, where it ultimately finds its roots. And this is all the foundation of what became pagan Rome. Now, speaking of Rome, you know, it started off with all of these pagan emperors. But we all have heard of Constantine. Constantine comes along in 325 A.D. Um, and you know, he has that vision and he sees the, apparently he sees a cross in the sky. What he actually saw, we don't really know, but that's, you know, whatever the writings say. But after he saw this, he did not convert to Christianity as some people teach. And he did not force the Roman empire into Christianity at this point. What he did was, he started favoring Christians. So, and he established freedom of religion at the time. And he exempted Christian ministers from paying taxes, like America, in a lot of ways. Do what? Yeah, that's right. And so he also issued a general exhortation uh, that all of his subjects should become Christians. But what he, what he also did was, he moved the capital of, of the Roman empire from Rome to Constantinople or Byzantium at the time, or what's known as Istanbul now. Now, Constantine did a lot of good things. We don't want to fault him too much. Uh, but you know, he's definitely the roots of the early Catholic Church. He stopped all the gladiator fights. He reduced the killing of unwelcome childrens. Didn't completely eliminate, but he reduced it. He abolished crucifixions. Um, he repealed the persecution edicts of Diocletian. And we talked about Diocletian a little bit when we were talking about Smyrna. Diocletian was a bad dude. Um, he also, here's what Constantine did though, that where he kind of starts going astray. He assumed headship of the church. They don't call him the first pope. They call Peter the first pope, but he became head of the church. And he also advanced Christians to high office. Well, what else did Constantine do? Oh, he declared Sunday as a, as the day of worship. And he forbid work on Sunday. He changed the Sabbath from Saturday to Sunday. Because on the Sabbath, they were forbidden to work. The Sunday is not, and that's where a lot of uh, confusion comes in. The Sat, Jesus never abolished the Sabbath. We are free to choose what day we want to rest, but Jesus never abolished the Sabbath. But the, the, Constantine is like taking these Roman things and these pagan things like Sunday. Sun, day, you understand that? We go back to, you know, Tammuz, the sun god. It was about venerating the sun god. And so he took Sunday and basically Christianized it. He also reduced slavery. So he did some good things. And he moved the empire. Well, after Constantine, the next emperor of Rome was Julian the apostate. Well, Constantine sought to bring Christianity in. This guy fought it back, hence his name, Julian the apostate, and he tried to restore paganism. Well, that didn't last very long. You can see his reign was kind of short because of this. And Jobian took over in 363 A.D. And he only, he didn't reign very long either, but he reestablished the Christian religion. But he is not, still not the one that made uh, Christianity the state religion. Theodosius comes along. Theodosius makes Christianity to the, the actual religion of the Roman empire. And he, here's the thing that he did wrong. He forced people to convert. So the churches were filled with all kinds of people that didn't want to be there. Um, and he, he was a heathen. Um, and he brought about merging the church with the world, because he brought paganism and mingled it with Christianity. Because he's trying to keep all these people happy. Um, so he brought in this whole thing about married to the world kind of thing. Now, if we look at Thyatira, it was a important center of trade. Um, and the thing about Thyatira, there were these trade guilds and you were, whatever trade you were in, you were required to be a member. Um, and you needed to be under the patronage of some pagan deity. So Thyatira, a lot of people don't know this about it. It was known for its dyes, particularly its purple dots. Um, you know, scarlet probably, most likely. And if you remember Lydia in Acts, chapter 16, Lydia was a wealthy sales rep for Thyatira. And she was living in Philippi. So you can start tying these kinds of things together. So, you know, they, again, as they tried to mingle things together, they heathenized, tried to make the heathens Christians without them actually having a real conversion. Pagan temples were turned into Christian churches. Heathen festivals were converted to Christian ones. There was all kinds of stuff going on. And then pagan priests slipped into offices as Christian priests. So the changes really weren't so much. So what persecution couldn't accomplish? The church being married to the world did. So Thyatira is our church that we're looking at at the moment. If you go to Revelation, chapter two, verse 18, "And unto the angel of the church of Thyatira." So the church name is given right there. Um, and then the title of Jesus, like we see in all the churches. "These are the things that saith the Son of God, who has the eyes, like, has eyes like a flame of fire, and his feet are like fine brass." And we talked about that brass stuff previously, because we saw him in Revelation, chapter one, with feet of brass. And now we see him again here with feet of brass. And so it's speaking of his, like it does in chapter one of him as priest, I believe. Because he's in priestly garments. He's not dressed like a king in any of this. He's more dressed like the high priest. So we, we have his title, like we have on all the churches. And just like the other churches, we have a commendation. He tells them something they are doing good. He, he, there's one church he doesn't say anything good about. Actually, there's two. Um, but he says some good things here. "I know thy works and thy charity and your service and faith and thy patience and thy works and the last to be more than the first." So they were putting other people first. They were following what Jesus said. And they were giving to the poor and helping and doing all these things. So yep, he was very happy about that. But, yeah, but as always, after a commendation, he gives you the hero sandwich. This is your doing good. Now, what are you, what am I concerned about? Jesus said, "Nevertheless, I have a few things against you, because you suffer us, that woman Jezebel, which calls herself a prophetess to teach and to seduce my servants, to commit fornication, to eat things sacrificed to idols. And I gave her space to repent of her fornication, and she repented not." Now, who is this Jezebel is the question. Is this the Jezebel that we're familiar with in the Old Testament, which we'll talk about her a little bit more in a few minutes? Or was there a woman named Jezebel in Thyatira that he's talking about? And that's a good question. I, I tend to think he's probably, maybe there was. But this woman, if there was a woman named Jezebel, was very, very much in the spirit of the Jezebel of the Old Testament. Because you can kind of see the things that calls herself a prophetess. And she wants to teach and seduce servants, to commit fornication and to eat things sacrificed to idols, all the pagan things. So continuing the concern, notice the concern's pretty long on this one. Sometimes they're short, sometimes they're long. He's got some concerns here. "He said, 'Behold, I will cast her into a bed, and then that commit adultery with her into great tribulation.' Now, except they repent of their deeds." This does not, if you look at the Greek here, because people say, oh, that, that's talking about the great tribulation. That's, it's not a, it does not have a definitive the on it. All he's saying is, he's going to cast her into trials and troubles. It's not the same, when we see great tribulation, it's not the same words that are used. It's just, it's just a general talking about, as Christians, we will have trials. It's the same kind of thing, the same kind of word is used about tribulations and the trials. So Jezebel, who was Jezebel? I think, you know, you probably have all looked and studied her in the Old Testament. She was the daughter of Ethel, King Assydan. So she wasn't even a Jew. And he and she was, uh, he was the priest of Asherah. Remember the whole Asherah thing? And the murderer of his predecessor. So her father was a bad dude. So you can probably imagine looking at Jezebel, where she got her evil, from her father. Cause he killed to become king. So he killed Phileth Phylus to be able to take over the throne. And then she married King Ahab, which, you know, he was the king of the northern kingdom of Israel. And he formed an alliance between the northern kingdom, which was called Israel, and Phoenicia. So there was that alliance that was formed. And she, if you remember in First Kings, she seeks to destroy all the prophets of Yahweh, as it says in First Kings 1813. So at Jezebel, she, um, if we look at Jezebel, she was a worshiper of Baal. She was also a worshiper of Ashtar. Which these things both originate in Babylon. They have different names in the Babylonian culture, but that is the same gods that she is worshipping. And she and Ahab brought in the, probably the worst time in the Old Testament history. They were bad news. You know, people talk about when, when people are doing deliverance ministry and they talk about people having a spirit of Jezebel in them. I mean, she was bad. Debbie, you know that. She was bad news. So you can see here, some of the things, you know, related to pagan worship that God's calling out. You know, in First Kings 16, we're talking about Jezebel and Ahab there. Those, they, they were making the Israelites worship Baal. Ashtar, they also brought Asherah in there. And the groves, the groves and Asherah are kind of, they tie in together, but Deuteronomy makes a reference to these groves. And the abomination of the Sidonians in Second Kings. These, I give you these, these, you have all these links, these references from the Bible. You can go read these things. Oh, and look at this. In Jeremiah, chapter seven, 18, he uses the word queen of heaven. Let me find that one real quick as well. Anybody remember where else you've heard queen of heaven in your modern day culture? That term used? Anybody familiar with that? Debbie, do you know?
No, I know.
So when you, uh, if you go read some of the Catholic stuff and, and some of their, their writings and some of the things they teach, they call Mary queen of heaven.
You're right. You're right. I remember now.
So they're, they're calling it, calling her queen of heaven. Which they're basically, like I mentioned, those statues that you see of Mary are most likely not Mary. They are most likely these ancient pagan gods that they were worshiping. And find that queen of heaven. Let me look in one more place. I think it's maybe it's in Jeremiah 44, because the one I just saw in Jeremiah seven didn't say queen of heaven. I'm looking. Let's see. Forty-four, let me look real quick. Forty-four, fifteen. That's a long passage, but it's, I can look for it later, but if you read through these, she's called queen of heaven. Ashar, Ashtar, which is also whatever all these other gods are. So it just, I'm not going to go through the whole story with you, but if you remember the story of Ahab and Jezebel, um, you know, Elijah, um, was coming through and, um, Elijah kind of rebuked Ahab. And, um, there's this whole showdown between Elijah and the prophets of Baal on Mount Carmel. And it's in First Kings, chapter 18. You can go read about that whole showdown because of Jezebel that went down. But the funny thing is, um, that's when, um, uh, Elijah called fire down from heaven and, and Baal, the prophets of Baal couldn't. And then he slew them all and killed them all. But the funny thing is, after he kills all those prophets of Baal, he's all of a sudden afraid of Jezebel again. And he takes off and goes and hides. Um, so why was he afraid after God had just done that? It's a really weird thing. But he kind of gets his courage back and, you know, he does end up confronting those two. And then one other one I would encourage you to go read is First Kings 21, if you really want to see how bad Jezebel was. Because in, in First Kings 21, Jezebel, uh, encourages King, because Ahab sees Nabas' vineyard. And it makes me kind of think of the, the thing that Nathan tells David about the, the poor man that had one lamb and, you know, the rich man came and took it. Um, it kind of reminds me of this, because King Ahab sees Nabas' vineyard that he has. And he's jealous. And so he goes to Jezebel and whines to her. So he was a, he was very weak. And Jezebel encourages him to make a false accusation against him, condemn him and execute him. So Nabas killed. I definitely encourage you to read the story. It's very interesting if you've not read it. Um, so Nabas seizes the vineyard. I mean, Nabas' vineyard is seized by Ahab. Jezebel gives it to Ahab after she slays Nabas. Bad news. Ahab after she slays Nabos, bad news. And then David ends up marrying Abigail, who was Nabos' wife, but. Anyway, you can read through those things, it's interesting, so Jezebel was bad, that's the whole picture we're trying to form of her. She was very bad. She ended up getting her comeuppance later on, that's why I encourage you to go read the story, because uh, she gets killed. Continuing back to our talking about uh, Thyatira. But unto you I say, and unto the rest in Thyatira, as many have not seen this doctrine. And which has not known the depths of Satan. As they speak, I will put upon you no other burden. That much, that you already had, hold fast till I come. So he's making a proclamation to them, it's like, you know what, this stuff that's going on with, with Jezebel. And this other crazy stuff, whatever, it was a bad place. Um, he's saying, you know, you're, you're dealing with Satan. And I'm not gonna put any more burden on you, so he, he, he does rebuke them. But he's trying to encourage them at the same time. And then what he always does in his letters, these seven letters that Jesus wrote to the churches, they all follow this form, some of them may switch things around, but it's always these seven things. The promise to the overcomer, and he that overcomeeth, and keep the works unto the end, I will give him the power over the nations. And he shall rule them with a rod of iron, as a vessel of potter, they shall be broken. Um, to shivers. And even as I have received of my Father, I will give him the morning star. So Jesus is making these promises to those who overcome. And then. As he always concludes his letter, the promise to the overcomer, he that hath an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. Sometimes these things get flipped. Sometimes the promise to the overcomer comes before this, it, it, I mean, the, um, the, um. And what is it, it gets moved around, kind of thing. Part of this promise to the overcomer gets flipped with this he that hath an ear, because that's all part of the promise to the over, but he flips it sometimes, sometimes he'll say this first. Other times he'll say. This other aspect of it first, so let's can, let's see here what we have on Thyatira. So Thyatira. Um, that we get the, the name of the city and the name of where the church is, the title of Jesus Christ, son of God. Uh, the commendation, what are they doing good? The concern, where have they fallen short? The exhortation, and then the promise to the overcomer, notice though, what's happened here? All of these first three churches that we looked at. We had the promise to the overcomer at the very end. But after he that hath an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches, but for some reason, he flips these things around. And says this, and then he, his promise to the overcomer, and then he says he that hath an ear. And we're gonna see for the rest of the churches, starting with Thyatira. It's always in this order now, so we flipped it. These three were all here and now it's here, and so I think there's something significant to that, because. It changes the whole form of all these letters. Well, he says to the overcomer, well, who is the overcomer, well, we know who the overcomer is, whoever is born of God overcometh the world. So First John five, four and five. So that is the promise to the overcomer, and that is who the overcomer is. Now, the prophetic side of this thing. So, as I've mentioned to you already, the Babylonian cult strongly infiltrated. Infiltrated into the Roman Catholic Church. And in three seventy eight A D, Demascus, the bishop of Rome. Took on the office of Pontiffus Maximus, or high priest of the Babylonian religion. You remember? There are all this flipping back and forth and mingling the church with the world, well, all this mingling happened here. So basically, this, um, had previously been the prerogative of the Roman emperor. This Pontiffus Maximus. But this bishop took this title upon himself. So this is when the Christian church under these, um. During these times in the Roman Empire, when the Christian church was merged with pagan religion. And this is where the, the whole pope and these kind of things come from, so he wasn't a pope. You know, they try to say Peter's the first pope, but they don't have any popes after him for a long time, so it's kind of an interesting thing. So Pope. The word Pope means Papa or Father, and it was initially applied to all Western bishops. So it was not until, um, about five hundred A D. That it began to be restricted to the bishop of Rome. So they were all, all the Western bishops were called popes, up until around five hundred A D, and then the bishop of Rome kind of concept started in. But for the, for five hundred years, though, the bishops of Rome were not popes. So as you know, as I mentioned, the Roman Catholic Church, their tradition is that Peter was the first pope, that is flat out false, Peter was not the first pope. Um, there's no biblical or historical basis for it. There's also no evidence Peter was ever even bishop of Rome, because that's a requirement to be pope, you have to be a bishop of Rome, and Peter never was. Um. You know, if you, you look at Peter's life. Um, his, you know, neither, in First Peter, he says neither is being lords over God's heritage, but being. In sample to the flocks, so Peter doesn't want a lord over the people, he wants to be a servant. And then the Babylonian Talmud was compiled in Babylon, um, and it's. Some of what he says in Second Peter five thirteen ties us back into the Babylonian Talmud. Now, the Babylonian Talmud. Um, is the Jewish Talmud, but it was, it was rewritten, they had written it. But it was rewritten when they were in Babylonian captivity, the, the, I guess the priests that were captured wrote it. Now, with, with Peter, I wanted to share one little interesting tidbit with you. Um, that happened on December seventeenth. So on December seventeenth of last year, some of you know this. Um, the, this is the day that, or the, yeah, this is the day that the Pope. The current Pope. Pope Francis made these declarations and declared basically blessing, um. Homosexual marriages and other kinds of things, and so this was the day these things happened. Well, what's interesting is there is a statue of Peter. In the Pope's hometown in South America, because he's a South American Pope. There is a statue of Peter in his hometown, and the statue of Peter has some keys in his hand. And it has a halo over his head, well, it did until December seventeenth. It's very interesting that on that day, lightning, and there's lightning rods around this big statue. But lightning struck that statue twice. Which is even weirder, that it would hit it twice, well, here's what it looked like before. Had a halo on its head and keys in its hand. This is what it looked like after it got hit by lightning, the halo was gone and the keys were gone, and we know those keys. Jesus talks about those keys, I give you the keys to the kingdom, you know, and I give you the, uh, that, uh, you know. The, the, I'm trying to remember the exact verse, I give you the keys to the kingdom and the gate of hell shall not prevail against the church. Well, this is an interesting thing, I don't know if it's, I definitely don't think it's coincidence. But this is interesting that this statue that had these keys and this halo that represented the Catholic Church. From their perspective. On that day, got it knocked out of their hands, so did the authority get taken away from them? I don't know, it's hard to say. But as far as the Catholic Church, there's the fourth century patriarchs, there were, there was Rome first, then Constantinople. There was also a center in Antioch. That we're familiar with in the Bible, Jerusalem and Alexandria, so the Romans were pretty spread out. Well, there was something that happened in nineteen ninety four, which was probably a bad thing. Uh, there was a joint declaration signed that was called Evangelicals and Catholics Together, the Christian Mission for the Third Millennium. And basically, if you read this, it compromises the, the gospel. Um, it's a complete compromise of the gospel, so again, we see more pictures of the Catholic Church married to the world. If we look at. This prophetic profile that we've been looking at as we looked at these other churches, we have the apostolic churches. Which represents Ephesus, and we can kind of see that, because, you know, the apostles were in Ephesus and John. Retired in Ephesus and probably died there, um, at the end of his life. Um, and then Smyrna is the persecuted church, which we've talked about, Pergamos was, is the church. The married church, not married to the world, but the married church, and then Thyatira represents. If you take the prophetic profile, the medieval church, but they were married to the world because of Roman Catholic Church had married themselves to the world. Now, the interesting thing about this, you saw that flip of he that hath an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches. Well, again, the rest of these churches, it's in that flipped form. And so if you put these groups, group A, these churches. These churches, there's definitely some semblances on the, in churches of today. But these churches are primarily what we're seeing in the world, if we look at the world today. And so if you have all four of these churches. Have it said the same way to them, and two of these churches, nothing good is gonna be said at all about them. Um, these four churches fall in group B, and these are the only four churches. Where he mentions being cast into the great tribulation. So what does that mean? Don't know. It's something to chew on. So that is a little bit about Thyatira. Um, I have an appendix in the slides that if you choose to go look at it. That gets into whole history of the papacy, I don't, I didn't want to glorify and, uh, venerate the Catholic Church. In this discussion, so I wasn't gonna go through the history of the papacy in here, but. The pap, it is there if you want to read it, if you're interested in that history, because there were some bad popes, some really bad popes. And there's, there's some historical information there for you. Alright, so we need to look at another church. The next church, and you look at these on a map, you're gonna, and we'll see this map in a second. As we look at these churches on a map, they kind of, you know, it starts with Ephesus and it kind of works its way around. It's not like they were just kind of, if you look at Asia Minor, it's not like you just kind of jump back and forth, they kind of follow an order around, as we'll see in a second. So the church we want to look at is Sardis. So I was being pretty hard on the Catholic Church in that section, because they've done a lot of damage to the kingdom over time, but. Um, after we get done with Sardis. Um, you may, well, I don't know about us, because we're not really lined up with a lot of the Protestant church, but. Um, I think you're gonna see that what he has to say to Sardis. Is a lot stronger than what he said to the other church, Sardis, um, is an interesting church. So Sardis, we're gonna have a local application for Sardis, and the interesting thing, Sardis. We don't ever, you, you look around, I've, I've tried to look it up in the, the Greek and other places and doing like word studies. There is no like, um, nobody really knows what Sardis means, now, there's a Sardis stone. But I don't believe this was named after the Sardis stone, uh, and the Sardis stone even is mysterious. Because we really, because it's, sometimes it's called one thing and sometimes it's called another. In the Bible, when you see it mentioned, also there's a Sardis stone in the high priest's breastplate. But we don't really know exactly what it is. So Sardis is a, was a real city. Um, it was founded around two thousand B C. Um, and a little before that, and, but it was a city of renown during that time period. So way, way back. And if we look during the eighth and ninth century B C. This is where the Antaeans were in power, and this is where King Midas comes in, you might have heard of King Midas. People think that King Midas is a legend, maybe he is. Um, but King Midas, you know, the Greeks give him the credit for saying he could change things that he touched into gold. Um, also during the same period, the Greeks, uh, founded Melitus, Ephesus and a number of other cities in Ionia. So this is all when Sardis was founded. And then about seven hundred B C, um, the, the, this, the, uh, Sardis was destroyed. By these nomadic groups that had settled around the Black Sea, now, we're gonna see more about this in a second, and I think it. It could be a clue to what its name means, I think, as we, we see how these, how the city kept being taken. Because the thing about Sardis, Sardis was the city that was up on a hill. So, and we'll see it in a minute, it was kind of an impregnable fortress in some ways, or they thought it was. But the, uh. If you go back, um, the, uh, Cimmeranians were driven from their land in the eighth century by the Scythians. So Sardis was controlled by the, uh, Cimmeranians and the Scythians came in. And the Scythians are what we would consider southern Russia, modern southern Russia, where the, would be what the Scythians are. If you go study them, but they overran Asian minor and they destroyed Sardis and, um, then. They, uh, it was refounded by the Lydians in the seventh century B C. So Sardis. Is a very much interest to students of, if you, if you know who Herodotus is, if you like history and have studied history, you know, he's considered the father of. Of, of history in, in a lot of ways, so Herodotus, um, was, is a, a lot of interest. Sardis was of a, a very interest to him, the interesting thing about Sardis. Is, um, Xerxes. Had to take Sardis when he invaded Greece. And Cyrus marched against, um, his brother. So Xerxes invades Greece, Cyrus and him. And our Xerxes kind of have a, a war with each other, these two brothers do. And the interesting thing about Sardis is it was a city with a moat. So if we look at Sardis, Sardis sits right here, like we were talking about before, Ephesus, Smyrna, Pergamos, Thyatira. And now Sardis sits here. Uh, as we come more inland, notice it's not on the coast. But it will, if you look at it on the map, though. What you can see. Get this little marker out. You can see that Sardis was kind of central between all of these other cities. So it was kind of a, a central point, so it was, it was strategic location. Uh, between Pergamos, Smyrna, Ephesus, Philadelphia and Faygira, and you can kind of see the, these cities on here. By Regal, we don't see on here, because it wasn't, we're not looking at it as the seven churches, but it was also in this area here. So Sardis, it was a commerce city, it was a very wealthy city. Um, and the interesting thing about Sardis that, and, and Herodotus writes about this. They found gold there in the sand of the river that comes up to Sardis. And so some people say, well, maybe that has to do with King Midas, because you remember everything he touched turned to gold. And the interesting thing is, you know, is Midas a real person or not, well, there was. The interesting thing is around that time of these stories about Midas. Uh. Cro- Croesus was the king of this empire, of the Lydian empire, and Croesus. Basically, um. Could very well be who we call Midas. So he was the king of, of this part of the Lydian empire. Also, um, Sibylle was the goddess. You know, patron deity for the city of Sardis, we, we mentioned Sibylle before. And then Midas was a wealthy king of Faygira, but they. And then Midas was a wealthy king of Faygira, but again, they think that that may be Croesus. Not sure, because we don't really have a lot of proof that Midas ever existed, other than in, in legend, but it's very, could well be based off this guy. And if you look at the Greek mythology, um, you know, the, the uh, king of Faygira. Go back to Greek mythology. The Silenus was the god of wine and offered to give Midas anything he wanted, if you remember that story, if you've read that old story. And that myth, maybe it's not. But if you read that, the king asked that any, you remember, he asked the king. What do you want? I give you any wish you want. And Midas asked for being able, anything touches to turn to gold. Well, that's probably not the smartest thing that Midas did, because not only turned like stuff into gold that was good. But it turned his food and his water to gold as well. So obviously Midas had a problem because he couldn't eat. Well, he got himself free, if you go read the, the myth or the legend. Um, he was told by the god goddess, um, to go, or the god, to bathe in that river. And what they say is after he bathed in the river. It left the gold behind, that's why gold was later found in the river because of this. Probably not true, but that's kind of what they said. Now, as I mentioned, the city was considered to be impregnable. The city's high up on this hill, um, and it's got a moat around it. So it's nine hundred and fifty feet above this, on this hill. And the thing is, this, this hill was very slippery. It was not a uh, kind of hill that you could easily climb. So because, because it was a clay material, and there was a lot of erosion going on. And so the problem was, it's like, how do you take the city? They, they thought it was impregnable. They were arrogant about it even, like it couldn't be taken. But as I mentioned, um, the Persian kings, when they siege the city in five forty-nine B.C. Uh, Croesus, the king of Lydia there that we talked about, he didn't really guard the cliffs. On the city, because he was of the impression that there's no way they can get up here, it's but what Cyrus did was Cyrus, um, wa, he basically uh, offered a reward to any of his men that could figure out how to scale these cliffs. Because he knew if he could scale these cliffs, because he wasn't guarding it, they could take the city. So one of his soldiers watched a Lydian soldier drop his helmet. And he, he watched the path he followed to retrieve it. And so in the dark of the night, the Persians came in and took the city, which is interesting, because the Persians seem to have this way of doing things. Because if you look at the, at Babylon, you know, Nebuchadnezzar's Babylon, it was supposed to be, you know, no one could take the city. Well, Cyrus figured it out, he lowered the water level. And came in and took the city. So Cyrus was obviously a very brilliant man. Here's the thing about Sardis. That this happened more than once, so Sa, so it happened here, but it happened again and again and again. They didn't learn their lesson after this happened with Cyrus. They, they assumed those cliffs would protect them. So what this really tells us is, history teaches us that we don't learn anything from history. And if you go back and look, you know, more modern times. Um, we'll really go, look at Alexander the Great. Why did Alexander the Great lose when he attacked the, the Scythians? The same reason Napoleon lost and the same reason Hitler lost. They repeated the same failures of overextending themselves and their supply lines. When they were doing this. So if we look at, at uh, Sardis. Fell to the Persians in five forty-nine B.C. It was burned by the Ionians in five oh-one. It was surrendered to Alexander the Great in three thirty-four. This is all way before the church. It was taken by antagonists, it fell to Lucids in two fourteen B.C. around Daniel, when Daniel, some of Daniel's prophecies there about the solutions. And then the name became synonymous with promise without performing, or pretension unjust, justified. Appearance without reality, false confidence. Again, there's a, a book this guy wrote. Uh, Ramsey, Letter to the Seven Churches, and this, again, there's, we don't know the exact name, but these things seem to kind of point some things out. Um, and so the city failed because they betrayed themselves by having a lack of watchfulness. That king thought you can't take this city. So of course, he didn't protect it and guard it. So lack of watchfulness. Well, it's interesting, as we're going to see what he tells the church here. On what they get in trouble for in a minute. So we get to the, with Sardis, still, we get to the New Testament. It was pretty much disappeared by that time, so it was a city. But in seventeen A.D., this is again way before the church. Earthquake destroyed most of the city. And then the town was just, it was rebuilt, but the town was then destroyed again in fourteen oh-two. And it's really never been rebuilt. This is Sardis, what it looks like, it's all that's left of it. Bunch of ruins. So they started excavating it, and they found it, because they didn't know if it even existed. They found it in nineteen ten. And uh, the city wasn't dug out until nineteen fifty-eight. But they still, there's a little town there, but there's still like, uh, very minimal in its significance. So Sardis, unto the angel of the church of Sardis, we don't really know, like I said, what Sardis means, but I think when, what Jesus says, we kind of get a clue about that. Oops, went the wrong way. The title of Jesus here, look what he says. These are the things that saith he that hath the seven spirits of God and the seven stars. You remember that from an earlier section in Revelation? The seven spirits of God that we talked about, and the seven stars. They explain themselves, because Isaiah explains what the seven spirits of God are, and the seven stars, he tells us what that is in Revelation one. Represents churches, or the angels over the churches. So unto the angel of the church of Sardis. These are the things which saith he that hath the seven spirits of God and the seven stars. I know thou works, that thou hast a name that thou livest and are dead. It's interesting, because we don't know what Sardis means. And he says this thing here, this kind of cryptic thing, I know thou works, and thou hast a name that thou livest but are dead. And that word for name there is that Greek word there, oname, which means label or um, covered by a name. So, this is Sardis. We'll continue on here, but as we continue on, let me, I need to, this thing jumped to the wrong place, give me one second to find this. So here's the exhortation. Be watchful and strengthen the things which remain that are ready to die. For I have not only, have not found thy works perfect before God. Remember therefore, where thou hast, what thou hast received and heard, and hold fast and repent. If therefore thou shall not watch, I will come on thee as a thief, and you will not know on which hour I come upon thee. Anybody know where that reference comes from? Come upon you like a thief. Yeah, like a, like Elaine says, like a thief in the night. You know, Jesus talks about that in uh, in the Gospels, about uh, coming like a thief in the night, and Peter talks about it, but you remember when Peter, I think it's Peter or Paul, when he thinks Peter, when Peter talks about it. Um, in the epistles, he says, but that day shall not overtake you like a thief. So they are, what did I tell you that they got in trouble, what the city got in trouble for, for all those times? They were not being watchful. They didn't protect the city, because they said, oh, this city can't be taken, it's impregnable. So they were prideful and didn't think they needed to watch. And I think, you know, he's talking here to this church that, um, you did not watch, and I may come upon you as a thief. And if you notice with this church. He's not saying, there is no commendation for this church. They did not do, he did not speak any good of them. He immediately starts exhorting them. And what they're doing. So he says, be watchful. And to strengthen the things which remain. And then remember. And hold fast and repent. So he's giving them a very strong, and if you don't do these things, he said, I'm going to come on you as a thief. So I think this, you know, makes sense, because if you think about, you know, if you're not being watchful. Then it's real easy to be taken by surprise. We shouldn't be taken by surprise when Jesus comes back. Now, sure, we don't know the day or the hour, he said we don't know the day or the hour. But at the same time, we know that, we'll know the season. He expects us to be watchful, and as I mentioned to you in an earlier study. When Jesus came into Jerusalem on Palm Sunday, and they rejected him. He said, if you had known that this thy day of your visitation. But now these things are hidden from you. He expected them to know, and he even gave them a way to calculate it. We'll look at it later when we get into further in Revelation, but there is a calculation, that you can do a precise calculation from the Book of Daniel. From a prophecy that's in there. And if you do that calculation, from the time our Xerxes issued the decree to restore and rebuild Jerusalem. Until Jesus shows up on Palm Sunday. The exact calculation you can do from the Book of Daniel, and it's exact on the day he showed up in the city from when that decree happened. So he expected them to know that timing. So he says to be watchful, be vigilant. What about the, you know, the ten virgins in Matthew twenty-five? You remember the, you had the ten, five of them had the oil, enough oil, five of them didn't, the foolish virgins didn't. They weren't vigilant, and now look what happens when the five virgins, now, I have no idea what the parable means. Um, I don't think it has, don't think it's Christians, because some people teach what's called a partial rapture, that if you're not ready and watchful, you'll get left behind. I, that's putting too much, in my opinion, putting too much credence in man and our abilities to screw things up. So I don't think it's really that, uh, but it is uninteresting thing. So we're told to be watchful. And also in First Peter, it tells us to be watchful of the wiles of the devil, and Jesus even tells, uh, is it, I think it's Peter. That be watchful, because the devil wants to sift you like wheat. So it's, we're commanded to be watchful. And of his coming, we're commanded to be watchful. We don't know when he's coming. But again, we know the season, he's, he said, you will, you know, the times in the season, you will know the timeframe. It's like, some people, you know, again, people say you can't know the day or the hour. I agree. And I'm not going to date set or predict a date. I will tell you this, though, I believe the rapture is a whole lot closer today than it was two thousand years ago. I think it's a whole lot closer, um. Well, I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna set a date, um, you know, that's, that's a I see people doing that right now, people setting all kinds of crazy dates. We should never set dates. But I'll give you, I will tell you this. When you, so we know Christmas, you know, comes once a year. Let's just take Christmas as an example. About a month before Christmas, well, even these days in the stores, in September. You start seeing Christmas stuff. You'll see Christmas trees in the stores and Yeah, I remember, right after Labor Day, there was all kind of Christmas stuff. So, again, that wouldn't be date setting, saying I know Christmas is, is coming up. I see the signs. I see the decorations out, I see the tinsel in the holly, I see the Christmas lights go up. Those point me to, it's an event that's coming. So I would, I would say the same thing about Jesus, because he talks about in Matthew twenty-four, and we get further in Revelation, we can get into it. Um, but when we look at Matthew twenty-four, he gives these signs to watch for. They call them, he calls them birth pangs. And so as these signs accelerate. His coming is drawing near, and if we look at what's going on in the world today. They are definitely accelerated. Again, I'm not going to set a date. People try to get me to set a date all the time. I have one in my head, but I'm not saying it out loud. I'm probably wrong, but I'll be wrong in my head on that, but, um, it's, uh, well, where was I going with that? There are, we are seeing this rapid succession of signs, and Israel is in the land again. See, that's one of the things that couldn't have happened, that hadn't, from the time they got kicked out of the land until nineteen forty-eight. There was a problem. None of those prophecies that talk about his second coming could be fulfilled. So those are, we can't, we don't set dates for the rapture, but the second coming, we know when that'll happen. It will happen at the very end of this period called the seventieth week of Daniel, and Israel will be back in their land. So we know they have to be in their land for these prophecies to even be fulfilled. They are in their land. So as I said, we're much closer to his return than we were two thousand years ago. Also be watchful of false teachers. In Ephesus, remember, when we looked at them, they were watchful. But he commended them and, and gave them a commendation for being watchful of false prophets, and, and if you read the Book of Acts and some of those things that we talked about. You see evidence that they were very watchful. Now, we talk about what he says here, go back here real quick. Strengthen the things which remain. Well, if we think about this in, in today's terms, we start trying to apply some, some homiletics to this and think about this. You know, what strengthen the things which remain? Well, if we think about what's happening in the world today, and what the modern church is doing. Well, you, then, and again, our, our group is not guilty of this, but a lot of groups are, and a lot of churches are. Justification by faith alone is being something that's being diminished and kind of done with. People are trying to push um, universalism and some of these other crazy things, and trying to add works to things. The inherent word of God, that's a huge one. That, that is something we have to hold to and tight to. The depravity of man, is man getting better or is man getting worse? Definitely not any better. And then the blood, you, you, so many Protestant churches minimize the blood of Christ. So those are all, and even some translations of the Bible. The new, the New International Version, and some of the modern trans, the other modern translations. They have gone in and I believe very intentionally, taken verses out that talk about the blood. It's very interesting if you read those and put it side by side with like an N.A.S.B. or a New King James. They absolutely minimize the blood in that. So those are things we have to hold fast to, because the world is not getting any brighter. Um, you know, the works that are not complete that he mentions there, you know, our love. We have to, Ephesus lost their first love. We can do the same thing all the time, our fear. We have to be fearful of God. A reverent fear of God. And our, and our devotional life is what gets us there. Sure, we need to study the Word, and we need to go to church and do these things. But the devotional life with God is really where we develop the fear of the Lord. Uh, in, by my own life experience. And then our loyalty, I've talked about this several times. The loyalty, when we talk about the Ten Commandments, and we talk about thou shall not take the name of the Lord thy God in vain. I do not believe that is profane. I do not believe that is profanity. I don't think we should use that kind of profanity. Doesn't bring any glory to God, but I don't think that's what he means. I think that he means it's about our ambassadorship, that we are his ambassadors and he says we are. And if we misrepresent the king, think we can get ourselves in trouble. Look at Moses. What did Moses do? God told Moses the first time when they needed water in the wilderness to strike the rock. He hit that rock with a stick. Second time, God said, what, what did God say to do to the rock? Yeah, speak to the rock, absolutely. Did he speak to the rock? He hit it again. And that cost him a trip to the promised land. And I believe that was because. He took God's name in vain and he misrepresented him to the people. We don't want to be guilty of misrepresenting God in my humble opinion. So without him, we can't, and without us, he will not. Well, be watchful, strengthen thyself. Which we already read there. And as we look at this verse here. I will come on thee as a thief and you won't know an hour which I come upon thee. I believe these, these people that he's talking about here are not believers. They're just living their life up and just ignoring God cuz like I told you, I don't believe that there's a partial rapture that some people teach. It's all or none. Um, and I think that, that those foolish virgins probably were unbelievers. Well, I, they, they had to be. And you, you remember another thing Jesus talks about when he, you know, he's, people being surprised. By what he's saying. Matthew chapter seven. When he says, not everyone that says to me, Lord, Lord, will enter the kingdom of heaven. And look what he's, what the people say in that day, didn't we prophesy in your name? Didn't we cast out devils? We did all these miracles and wonders. That's a scary verse, honestly, when you look at it. Cuz these people were doing all these things. That were not false signs and wonders. They were real cuz he didn't say they were fake. All he condemned them for is like, you did those things, but you don't know me. So that's a, that's a really humbling thing, I believe that.
Personally think that we can do many things in his name, but if we do not love, it is meaningless. And I think that is where that comes in. We can. Be, what do you call it, lapse of complacency. Not watchful.
Can y'all hear Elaine? I'll repeat it.
Not, not done it from his heart.
What Elaine was saying is she kind of thinks this might tie into, um, how'd you say it again, that, that.
Acts of obedience, but not.
Acts, acts of obedience, but not out of love. Just doing the works, kind of like the Ephesians, what they got in trouble for, losing their first love and not doing those things. But the, I would agree with that in part, but that very last part of the verse is the scary part. Cuz he says, they just said they did all these things. And then he said, I will profess to them, I never knew you. The part for me, you who work iniquity. These people are people that are going to hell, I believe. Don't believe these are believers. Maybe they are. I don't think they are, but maybe they are. I don't know. What do you think, Debbie? You think they're believers or not?
I'm not sure Dustin. It can be, go one way or the other.
That's a tough verse. It always makes me humble myself when I read that verse cuz it's like. That's a seriously strong word from the Lord right there.
Yeah. Scary.
He's done many wonderful works. Notice they're not, they're not fake, they're real. Yeah, it's a, it's definitely a. A humbling thing. Thou hast few names, even in Sardis, which have not defiled their garments. And they shall walk with me in white, for they are worthy. Again, look at, he's making this weird reference to the names again cuz I think. He prophetically knew the name of the, whatever the name Sardis meant would be lost in history. It's just really interesting. All these other, these other cities where these churches are, we know what their names mean. Sardis, we have absolutely no idea. So it's really interesting this. In Revelation right here, making a reference to Sardis and saying, there's a few names. Um, and then he says, in the city also, he says, there's a few that have not defiled their garments. They'll walk with me in white. So I think he's also saying this church. Is. Full of unbelievers. Like Matthew's talking about here. Based on what he's saying cuz there's only a few worthy that are found. So a few names in Sardis. Well, what does he say to him after this? This is what, this is a tough one too. He that overcomeeth, the same shall be clothed in white raiment. And I will not blot his name out of the book of life, but I will confess his name before my father and behold, before his angels. This is one of those troubling verses too. He that overcome, the same shall be clothed in a white raiment. That's all cool and that's fine because he makes that reference to the white there. They shall walk with me in white. There'll be the white robes. That, that makes sense. But then he says. I will not blot his name out of the book of life. Now, that's, that brings up a lot of interesting thoughts because the. The book of life. I've heard some people teach that everybody's name is written in it in the beginning. And then if you reject him, your name is blotted out of the book. So I don't exactly know how to interpret that. I don't believe that. You know, we're not here to talk about a lot of different theology topics. Some of them will come up, but. It does kind of come up here, the, what, what's called eternal security or, you know, some people call it once saved, always saved. I, um, you know, this one is one of those verses that. You gotta kind of look at in, in that light. Cuz I will not blot his name out of the book of life. He doesn't say that he can, he doesn't say that he can't. He just says he won't. So it's, it's kind of a tough thing. So this is the promise to the overcomer. And then just like Thyatira. He ends with, he had near, let him hear what the spirit says to the churches. Alright, now what I wanna do here, let me fix this real quick. I got, I got some junk out of order. Messed up. Let me fix it real quick. Just real quick, I wanna just run through this. I don't wanna spend too much time on it. But I think it's important to understand the early church. And what a lot of people believed is this, this church. Historically, and if we kind of do it prophetically, represents the Reformation. If the, if Thyatira represented the Catholic Church, well, what came after the Catholic Church, the Reformation? And, and what you find in the thirteenth century that the papacy. Had been vulnerable, vulnerable to attacks because of greed. They were immoral. You should see how bad some of those popes were. One of those popes, and I can remember, is one of the Gregories, I believe. He killed more Christians in one day than the Roman emperors killed in their entire time. So this dude was bad news. Um, this, um, the Catholic Church, you know, the, the whole thing. They had, they controlled much of Europe at that time and they were not treating the poor people well. Then you come to the fourteenth century and John Wycliffe, which many of us have heard of Wycliffe, comes to the scene. And he's one of the reformers and he basically is coming against the papacy. Um, and you're talking, I think they killed him too. Um, talking about selling indulgences and venerating saints and all of these things that he was calling them out for. And he also translated the Bible into English cuz before it was only available in Latin. In the Roman world, in the, in the, the Roman priests rolling when they could read it. Poor people couldn't read it. They didn't know how to read Latin. That was their intentional thing. So Wycliffe's teaching spread to Bohemia where they found advocates in John Huss. And he was executed in fourteen fifteen. And then there was a war with a Bohemian nationalists. And this war was a precursor to the religious civil war in Germany that happened in Luther's time. Now, people say, well, why didn't Luther die? And we'll talk about Luther more in a second because, you know, Luther was doing the same stuff this guy was doing, but they took his life. Uh, there was a period of the French papacy and again, if you read in the appendix for the, the notes. You can see the whole thing about the papacy and the Vatican. Uh, but the captivity of the Pope at Avangon in the fourteenth century. And the Western schism impaired the authority of the papacy. And it divided everything up, which is what allowed Martin Luther to do what he did later without. One of the reasons he was able to do it without getting killed. And then in this, this fourteen hundred period, they, they tried to reorganize the, the hierarchy. But it didn't really get a majority. Then more papal history there, but see, you're in the fifteen hundreds now. Well, what gets invented in the fifteen hundreds, really the late fourteen hundreds is such a big deal. Anybody ever recall, there was a huge invention in the late fourteen hundreds that changes the world?
Printing press.
The printing press, exactly right. So because of the invention of the printing press, the Gutenberg Bible came into be in fourteen fifty five. And this allowed, basically this to come out of the Dark Ages. People were able to be more literate and were able to read. And this is really what started fueling the revolution. And then, you know, um. They tried to decide whether Luther or Calvin or other reformers, um. Claim the Bible rather than churches as a sole authority. There's a big debate about that. And Martin Luther. You know, he was born in fourteen eighty three. He, uh, became a lawyer. A whole history with, with him when he nailed the ninety-five Theses to the door and all that. Now, interestingly about Martin Luther, and we're getting close to the end here, but the interesting thing about Martin Luther is, um. He really, uh, Habakkuk two four. The just shall live by faith. That was his life verse. That's what woke him up. And caused him to abandon the whole Catholic, um, and start fighting against it. So he was disillusioned with Rome. Now, Habakkuk two four says, the just shall live by faith. And the interesting thing is, if, if you read, um, is it Gal, I believe it's Galatians. There's three, three of Paul's, the two, well, two ep, of Paul's epistles. Uh, the, the one, the Romans. Tells us, um, who the just are. Um, and. The, how we should live, I believe, I gotta look it back up, but I believe it's, is it Colossians? But you, that verse from Habakkuk is quoted in both of those books. The just shall live by faith. So it's Paul's signature there. Well, it's interesting cuz there's a big debate about who wrote Hebrews. Huge debate. Who do you think wrote Hebrews? Debbie, who you think wrote Hebrews? Elaine said Paul.
I think Paul too.
Karen, who you think wrote it? She may not be able to hear me.
No, I can hear you. Yeah, I, I don't have a clue.
Uh, we don't know cuz it doesn't tell us, but I believe it was Paul. And I believe it's the signature of Habakkuk two four in the book. These are the only three epistles that have it in there. And Hebrews has the Habakkuk two four in it. And what Hebrews is about is, um. Faith. Living by faith is what Hebrews is all about. So, um, the just shall live by faith. Comes from Habakkuk two four. So Luther, that was his life verse. And Luther did a lot of good things. He nailed those Theses to the door. Um, he got excommunicated. They were gonna kill him. They actually were planning to murder him. And because of this building momentum and his wealthy upbringing, he was able to prevent that. But it led to all kinds of chaos. There was a centuries of war that began. There was a war on the German Protestants. So the Catholics' church started killing like crazy. All through Europe. You can see these wars that they started. The war on the German Protestants, the Protestants, the war on the Protestants in the Netherlands, the Huguenot War was a religious war. Philip's attempt against England and then the Thirty Year War. These are all things that all came out. Catholic Church started all these wars because they were trying to fight against the growing momentum. So it was all started by the Roman Catholic. It wasn't the church, it was, it was the church, but it was the kings. Remember the Holy Roman Empire? This is the stuff in the Holy Roman Empire. So they urged, the, the kings were urged on by the Pope and the Jesuits. To crush Protestants cuz Protestant movement had been born. So Jesuit's goal was to destroy heresy. And they considered heresy. What we consider not heresy. Anything different than the Pope said was heresy. And they were responsible for lots of killings. And lots of massacres. You can see some more of the stuff. The French Revolution was facilitated by the Jesuits. A lot of people don't know that. The Roman Catholic Church. And the Jesuits. And Spain, the Netherlands and Germany, all these other places, massacres, million, I mean, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of people murdered. By Catholics or by the Catholic Church. Saint Bartholomew's massacre. There was rejoicing in Rome when this happened. They killed seventy thousand Huguenots in one night. In fifteen seventy-two. So they were bad news. So the Eastern Orthodox Church comes up in ten fifty-four. The eleven seventy-four, uh, Waldenis, Waldensens through Peter Waldo. The, uh. Lullards, John Wycliffe there, the Hussites with Jan Huss. We talked about Wycliffe and Huss both. The Lutherans come up with Martin Luther in fifteen seventeen. Notice all these denominations, Anabaptists, the Scandinavian Lutherans, fifteen twenty-one. The Zwiglenism, so Zwigliggy. I don't know if that thing's around anymore. The Anglican Church, Henry the Eighth, we know that. The Mennonites. John Calvin. With Calvinism in fifteen thirty-six. And Calvin was not this nice guy that a lot of people think he was. He was a bad dude. Calvin was. Um, Calvin tried to have people killed that didn't agree with him. So you can see more history here. I'm not gonna, you know, there, you could go into lots of detail, but I'd throw some names out there that you maybe you're familiar with. You know, the Scottish Presbyterians, John Knox started that. The Congregationalism, the Puritans started that. So we're still all in the fifteen hundreds. So the, you can see the Protestant Reformation is exploding. The English Baptists, the Quakers, the Amish. We're now in the seventeen hundreds. Methodist start in seventeen thirty-nine by John Wesley. Then the Protestant Episcopal Church, then the United Brethren in Christ, the Unitarian, the Disciples of Christ, all these churches. All history, all comes from Luther. So we see this long history of these churches being laid out for us, um. And the thing about this is that the Protestant movement, they did a lot of good things. But I gotta, let me find my place here. They didn't do everything right. They did some really bad things. They got it right, salvation. Uh, by faith alone, through Christ alone. Yep, that was a big one. They got that one right. Where did it go? Hold on, it didn't go where I wanted it to. One second. So if we go back to.
Debbie had to sign off.
Okay, if we go back to Sardis. Okay, if we go back to Sardis. I'm almost done. We look at the, oh, remember the letters to the churches, all plural. Applications to all churches. You can see the ones we've talked about before. Sardis, watchfulness and diligence, that's what they're, the, what they were called to. And they failed at. So what we've looked at is we've gone through this big discussion. Obviously, it could be a little deep for, depending on how much of that you wanted, but. Uh, there's more notes here if you want to go deeper into it. Um, we want to get these history of these churches and lay this out and understand how everything. Fits and the whole picture fits together. Um, let's see, let me go here. So if we want to apply this. These churches to our own life, because this is, you know, like I said, he who hasn't yet let him hear what the spirit says to the church is. We are part of the churches. So these are personal applications we can apply, being. Focusing on priorities and watching out for satanic opposition and worldly compromise, pagan practices, all these things. And why do we want to do these things? Well, I mean, because we want to, we worship King Jesus and we want to be loyal to King Jesus. So the promises that we have for these churches, the promises to the overcomer. Remember, we talked about the overcomer earlier, to eat from the tree of life, not hurt by the second death. Pergama says he'll give him a manna, he'll give him a stone and a new name. Thyatira, power over the nations. Sardis walk with him in white. So these are all promises to those who overcome. And then Philadelphia is, we're gonna see. In an upcoming study. That their name will not be blotted out. When we get to Philadelphia. And when Laodicea can wait. So if we look at these churches. Thyatira and Sardis. The promise to the overcomer is before he hath near. It's flipped. And the rest of the, the other two churches that are left, it's flipped. And we'll try to cover both of those churches next time, so that we can get into the real meat of the book. Because that's really where I want to be. I want to be, uh, this stuff, we want to understand these things, but. Uh, because this, the thing is, I mean, the fun stuff is coming up, but the stuff that applies to us. And the church, or chapter two and three. We like, we love all the cool stuff, the fire coming out of heaven and the thousand pound hailstones and all that cool stuff. But we gotta. We won't be here for any of that. We'll get to watch it from the mezzanine. So. We want to take the lessons we can learn from these churches and from church history. So what I encourage you to do before we have our next session, read chapter two and three. I want you to read them seven times. They're not long. They're short little letters to the seven churches. Read them seven times. And then when you read, you want to look at the letter of Philadelphia, and I want you to outline the letter to Philadelphia. The same kind of way, apply what we've been doing. Look at your notes, apply what we've been doing with these other churches. The name of the church, the Christ name that's used there, their commendation, their, um, correction, all these things. Then look at Philadelphia and what do you notice? As you, the reason I want you to read it seven times, because I want you to notice something very unique about the Church of Philadelphia, that. It's not true of any of the other churches. There's a unique promise given to them, but there's some other distinctives in it. So see if you can find those things. Now, again, you'll have access to the notes and I won't go through this because it's like fifty pages of history of the Catholic Church. Review the papacy and all kinds of stuff. It's, if you like history, it's interesting, but I will spare you that. Um, you can read it on your own if you want to, or take it or leave it, however you want to do. So that, please, I'm gonna remind everyone, read those things seven times between now and next time. We'll meet again in two weeks. Um, and we will cover, try to finish the last two churches, because I really want to get to Revelation four soon, but I don't want to rush things either, so I. Will probably, um, try to cover both of those churches next time. So Karen, thanks for coming and thank everyone else for being here. And we're going to end for the evening and I hope you all have a wonderful week.